I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Sally?
Here.
Mrs. Willis?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the municipal meetings and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Our first presentation is going to be the Municipal Alliance Committee. Andrea Zapsek, this is her.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Zapsek. I work for RWJ Marcus Health Institute for Prevention and Recovery. My team and I, through a grant that we have through the state...
Please take into the mic...
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. My team and I, through a grant that we have through the state, are leading a process in Long Branch called Communities That Care, which is a data-driven, community-based process to help the community identify the risk factors that contribute to future youth problem behavior in the area of substance abuse, delinquency, teen pregnancy, dropout rate, et cetera. Been working with the Mayor's Task Force, and so that process is ongoing. You will be receiving an invitation very shortly. Mayor, thank you for your emails today confirming the date of May 7th for our key leader orientation. But through this process, what my agency also brings to the table is at no charge technical assistance to the city if you would like to apply for other grant funding. So it came to our attention that Long Branch does not currently have an operating municipal alliance. I don't know what the history is. I actually live in Ocean County. But Kendall and Claire, who are actually the leads on the Communities That Care project, have been attending the Monmouth County Municipal Alliance meetings and have brought back some information to share with all of you if you are interested in starting up or restarting, if you had one at one time, a municipal alliance committee. So the alliance grants are... they originated at the state. That fund is populated. It's called the Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction Fund, and it's populated by... it's not taxpayer dollars. It's actually fines and liquidated assets from drug deals and criminal proceeds. And it goes into a big pot of money in the state, and then it's divvied out to the counties based on a funding formula, and then they divvy it out to municipalities that are interested based on a similar funding formula. So the grants run on anywhere from three to four to five-year cycles, depending on what the Governor's Council... that's the funding organization, the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, whatever they decide. We are currently halfway through year five, and they just made a decision to extend an extra year because some of the processes are changing. So the current cycle will end in June 30th of 2020. So the Monmouth County Coordinator, Joanne Chu, has told me that there was an alliance in Monmouth County that pulled out, and they... so as a result, there's about $10,000 in available funding if Long Branch would be interested in applying, and that would be for the period from January 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2020. Typically during... if you're going to do that during that process, we'll be planning the grant for the future cycle, and that allocation would probably be more than $10,000. But they don't have their figures yet for what Long Branch would be eligible for. All we can really speak to is that $10,000. So I've been in touch with Councilwoman Vogt and Councilman Dangler, and I was invited here tonight to provide some information as to what that process would look like should you choose to go that route. So I'm going to pass these around. The Monmouth County sent a full application packet, and it's a lot of information, and I think if you opened it and looked at it, you'd probably run screaming from the room and say, "No way is this going to be worth $10,000. Is $10,000 going to be worth our time?" So it tends to look very daunting, but that is something, again, that my agency can help with. So I basically sort of cherry-picked the most pertinent...
Do you have one more?
Oh.
We're good.
Okay. So basically, from this, I've cherry-picked the most pertinent information for this juncture. The first step would actually be to form the alliance committee, and it doesn't have to be called the Long Branch Municipal Alliance. It could be called whatever you wanted. That's appropriate, at least, anyway. And that is... since you'd be starting from scratch, the state recommends that you do that by ordinance, and it's... the committee itself is designed to represent a broad cross-section of the community. So on the first page, you will see the slots that they ask you to choose someone from the community, and it can be more than one. Your membership is totally up to you. They're all public meetings in accordance with the Public Meetings Act, so even if nobody's... if someone isn't appointed, but they just want to volunteer, everyone is welcome to the table. And you'll see from the first page, carried on to the second, there's about 17 slots that they require that the funder has determined represent a broad cross-section of the community. So typically, the... and actually, I kind of got ahead of myself. The very, very first step, if you are interested, would be for the mayor to send a letter to Joanne Chu at the Health Department stating that Long Branch is interested in coming back into the program and applying for funding for January 1, 2020. And then, at the same time, or subsequent to, you would put an ordinance together forming the committee and designating these positions, et cetera, rules and regulations, and then however you choose to appoint. Sometimes the mayor appoints, sometimes the council appoints, sometimes the membership is open as long as these sectors are represented. That is totally... how you put it together is totally up to you. I can tell you, I live in Brick Township, and we had a very high-functioning alliance for many years, and then it was disbanded by the change of administration. It was disbanded, and then in 2014, we reformulated. So I'd be happy to provide a copy of our ordinance as a template. You don't have to follow that, but it's pretty comprehensive. But there's... like I said, it's totally up to you how you want to form the membership, et cetera. As long as these sectors are represented, you will be eligible for the grant funding. This goes into a little bit about residency requirements. That has to do with the grant. They require that at least 50% of the alliance membership are Long Branch residents, and so you would set that in that ordinance. You'd also set your meeting schedule, and it can be as specific. It can, you know, it can say the first Monday of the month, or it can say meets monthly at a schedule to be set by the chair. It's totally at your discretion. There's really not a lot of hard and fast rules as to how the alliance is going to operate. And then the next page is just about the function of the alliance. Again, this is stuff that you can include in your bylaws, in your ordinance, if you want to get that specific. And then the last few pages have to do with actually applying for the grant funding. So the reason that we've brought this to you at this point is that what we're doing with Communities That Care is very, very similar to what you would need to do to qualify for the funding. So one is almost going to automatically position you for the other. Whether you go that route or not is totally up to you. But we will be doing a data collection process. My staff and I met with the school superintendent a week before last. He's given approval for a student survey, which for Communities That Care is kind of the foundation of the data collection. But then you would look at other sources of data, police department data. One of the things that we're starting to look at in Ocean County is station house adjustments. Not all police departments do that, but it's a way of sort of off-the-record adjudicating youth matters so that, you know, the first-time offenders don't end up with a record, and that's a very rich source of data. Of course, it's all confidential. We just get numbers. Hospital data, other school data. The schools are required to track disciplinary incidents and things like that. And then looking at that, you would decide who else in the community you want... would like to talk to and form some focus groups or do some key informant interviews, and that tends to be more qualitative. We noticed in the data that this is going on in your school. Can you tell us a little bit about what you think the causes for that might be? And then all kind of gets put together where you identify a problem, and then the root causes, which are the contributing factors to the problem. And then, this is probably the most important thing that sets the program apart, the local conditions. So the local conditions in Long Branch might not be the local conditions in Red Bank. That might not be the local conditions in Brick, where I live. They're exactly that. They're local conditions. So your problem is your problem. Your root causes are the why, and the local conditions are why here and why now. And all of that gets supported with the data that's collected, and then that sort of determines what programs you're going to implement. The idea behind that is that if your programs are appropriately targeting the local conditions, they'll correct the local conditions, which will then take care of the root causes, which will then alleviate the problem.
We had an alliance here in the city many years ago.
Okay.
And that would be another position. Someone has to be the alliance coordinator. Is that right?
The paid coordinator is not required.
It is not?
It is not. A chairman or chair is required.
Okay.
A paid coordinator is not required. I can tell you that my government career started in 1998. I was hired as the alliance coordinator in Brick. I was a full-time coordinator, and I had a full-time staff. I was the only situation like that in the entire state. Most of the coordinators are very, very part-time, hourly or seasonal, if they're, you know, if they're paid at all. Some people do take it on as a volunteer basis. Our coordinator now in Brick is actually paid as a consultant, so he's always paid when he works, and that is included in the grant. You are allowed to allocate a certain percentage of the grant dollars to pay the coordinator. It's not expected that that would necessarily be a city hire, a full-time position.
Well, I understand you correctly. The chairperson could serve as the coordinator.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. So there is a match requirement on the grant. 25% in cash, 75% in in-kind. The cash can either be a contribution from the city, or it can be fundraised. In Brick, we fundraised for our match. Most recently, I worked in the city of Raway, where I also was the director of recreation, but I also oversaw their municipal alliance. The city contributed the match in that instance. It's totally at your discretion. The 75% in-kind are things that are... may already be going on and already. If you have a dare program, those officer salaries count towards the match. You're already paying that out. If you have a community policing division and you're doing a neighborhood watch program, those officer salaries, if you write the neighborhood watch program into the grant, those officer salaries can be used as match. So there's a lot of ways to do the match. If you were to set an alliance office up in your recreation department, the square footage contribution for that space by the city is considered an in-kind match. So it's not something that... the cash match, yes, that's cold, hard cash, whether you fundraised for it or whether that's a line item in the city budget, but the in-kind is... can be just about anything related to the program that the city is already spending.
Do you know what the consultants... just so we have a ballpark, how much typically in Brick... I know Brick's a lot larger than Long Branch, but what is the... what's the line item in the budget for that consultant or for the program there? Do you have any idea?
Our consultant is paid $35 an hour. He is a substance use professional, so he's fully credentialed. That's not necessarily required. A lot of times, the coordinator is also the rec director or someone in the recreation office or someone in the police department. Ours is $35 an hour because he is a consultant and not an employee, so that additional money kind of offsets the, you know, what he would have to basically cover his own taxes and other expenses. But that's totally at your discretion.
And then just typically, do you know what the annual cost of the program is in Brick?
It's zero cost because it's part of the grant.
No, I mean with... oh, oh, so you're saying you just stay within that same framework?
Correct. Yep. We fundraised for the match, and so we basically operate... we get $39,523 in Brick. Our match is a little under $10,000, which we fundraised for, and that's it.
But when we had it years ago, didn't you have a full-time employee?
Yeah. Yeah. That was the problem. And she left, and we couldn't find a qualified person. So that would be my next question. What are the qualifications for the person who might be the chairperson, not the alliance coordinator?
Say that again. So for the chair?
Yes.
The chair is a volunteer from the committee.
Okay.
And the requirements for the coordinator are whatever you put in your ordinance.
Okay.
So as I said, typically... so I started out as a full-time coordinator. I eventually moved into the recreation department, where I continued to supervise the alliance that was in Brick. I left Brick in 2009. I went to the city of Raway as the rec director, and they looked at my resume, and I went, "Oh, municipal alliance. Well, you can do that too." Because typically, what happens in local government, and I'm not making any assumptions, but I see it over and over again, when you don't know what to do with something, you put it in the rec department because your rec people get it done. And that's very, very common among recreation directors. So Dawn Thompson in Neptune is also the municipal alliance coordinator. Ralph Bernardo and Clark, those are two that I know right off the top of my head because I just saw a couple weeks ago at the rec conference. But that's very typical. A lot of times, it's someone in the police department. What you can't do is supplant part of a full-time salary with the alliance money. So say you have a full-time dare officer, and he's being paid, say, $50,000 a year. You can't say, "Well, we're now going to take $5,000 of the alliance money to offset his salary." So they consider that supplanting. Okay. So but you could, if you have any... if you have a seasonal worker, a part-time person in the recreation department, that's totally, totally allowable.
So was that person maybe a full-time city employee, and part of their job duties was...
Yeah.
Was doing this municipal alliance?
So when you handled the program as the recreation director, you couldn't charge part of your salary against a grand salary?
Correct. That's correct. Or any of my full-time staff. But they could be paid additional hourly or paid a stipend to be the coordinator.
How many alliances are there statewide, do you know?
At one time, there were... we have 565 municipalities. There were about 510. I don't know if that's still the case or not. I'm kind of going way back on that.
Do any municipality join forces together in one alliance, or they're all independent?
It's very, very frequently that happens, especially because we have a lot of small municipalities in New Jersey. So there had been at one time a Coastal Monmouth alliance, and I'm not sure if Long Branch was part of that alliance or... but I think it was maybe Long Branch Asbury, Bradley Beach. I'm stretching.
Oceanport was for... was for Long Branch.
Okay. Yep. So it tends to be common with smaller towns. And I don't know that... I'm going to send this around. This is actually a summary of what's in this packet, which I'm going to leave with happening. The... on the bottom, that is my contact information and also Joanne Chu from the Health Department, and she would be able to give you an idea if there's other alliances, other towns nearby that are looking to take on an additional partner, if you wanted to consider that as well.
So just an idea of the kinds of programs that have been funded through this. And I know, like you said, it changes in terms of the conditions.
Correct.
Yeah. But just an idea.
I've seen it all over the years. So back in the day, this program funded a lot of what was called alternative activities, which was like basketball leagues and dances and movies and that kind of thing. And over time, and I'm talking about the 20 years that I've been involved with it, I've seen things change a lot. Everything now with any funding, whether it's this funding or direct communities funding or what have you, it's all evidence-based. Show me the money. Show me the data. They want to see that you're moving the needle and that you're selecting programs or interventions that actually have some evidence base to them. So while there is a lot of merit in providing healthy alternative activities for young people as a standalone program, it really doesn't show any long-term efficacy for preventing youth from engaging in risky behaviors. Short-term, absolutely. Long-term, not so much. So there's curriculum-based programs that are eligible to be funded. Some of those off-the-shelf ones are pretty expensive. What they will no longer fund is one-shot deals, one-day assemblies, one day, you know, bringing a speaker, et cetera. They're looking for something that's gotten it now. What you can do is connect that to a broader program. So say for... and it's very odd because in this current cycle, they were very particular about... that's when they cut out all the assemblies and the one-day programs, et cetera. But they left one thing in, which was National Red Ribbon Month, which is October. But if you were going to spend money on red ribbon activities, you had to show that it was more than one day. It had to be part of a continuum of other programs, and then you could fund that assembly program as long as there were other things in kind of a roll-up to it. The one major change with this funding cycle was that they put an emphasis on what's called environmental strategies. So on the very last page of the first thing that I handed out, the Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America is kind of our nationwide clearinghouse. They provide technical assistance. They provide training. They provide educational materials. Basically, they help community-based coalitions to function and function more effectively. So they came up with what they call their seven strategies for community-level change. The top three are where prevention lived in the early part of my career: raising awareness, getting information out, providing support through skill-building programs, et cetera. The bottom four are when you change things... this is why they call them environmental strategies. When you change things about the physical environment, where you create a barrier, where you change a... where you modify a policy, where you add a consequence, those are actually the things that have been shown to provide... to bring long-term results. So the way I kind of talk about it, imagine that you're sitting on the bank of a river. It's not cold outside. It's nice. You're sitting on the fishing pier, and it's a nice, warm day, and you've got some tunes on the radio, and you've got your pole in the water, and all of a sudden, there's a child in the water, and he's drowning. And because you're all citizens that, you know, care about your community, you jump in, and you pull him out. And then 15 minutes later, it happens again, and then it happens again, and then it happens again. After a while, you're going to pack up your gear, and you're going to walk upstream, and what you might find is that there's a basketball court built right on the edge of the riverbank. And as the kids are missing shots and rebounds, those balls are going astray, and you're chasing them, and they're going into the water. So back in the early days, what could we do about that? Well, we could raise awareness. We could send out flyers to all the parents in the neighborhood. We could have the rec department come in and do skills and drills so that the kids become better shots and better rebounders. We could put a paid site supervisor out there to basically monitor, make sure that nobody goes in the water. But that's not sustainable long-term, and it only impacts those children that are there now, not the ones that are going to move into the neighborhood next week. And how about we build a fence around the basketball court? We've created a barrier. And then maybe you all pass an ordinance that says, "In the city of Long Branch, we're never going to build another basketball court on the banks of the river." And that's where your long-term change happens. So what those activities look like, in Brick, I can tell you, we started the Neighborhood Watch program. That's been very, very successful. We started it particularly because we had one, a high-density multifamily complex that was a hotspot for police calls, drug activity, all kinds of stuff, you know, tip of the iceberg on gang violence. And so we started a Neighborhood Watch in that community. Our police department restarted the community policing division, so we had bike patrols in there in the summertime. Part of it was that we had refurbished a park right near there, and there were a lot of resident complaints about, "Why are you putting money into this park? Because they burned it down twice. They're only going to burn it down again." But what we actually succeeded in doing is changing the culture in that whole neighborhood. So now the neighbors watch the park, and the kids that are coming through the woods are coming there to play basketball and then go back home and not making so much trouble. So we branched it out to other areas. We had a condo association that was having some problems, right near the Parkway exit. So what was happening is it was a quick getaway. It was a small association, only about 200 residents. Every single home has a Neighborhood Watch sign on their lawn. Do you know the crime has dropped to zero? What's happened is it's moved down the street to the next condo association, so we need to get them on board as well. But you wouldn't think that a sign would be a big deal, but it is because it sends a sign that we're watching you, and we're not going to tolerate any shenanigans in this neighborhood. In terms of direct substance use, the prescription drop boxes. Do you have a dedicated prescription drop box for unused medication?
Yes.
We do? We do? Okay. So that program... am I asking you? When did you buy yours?
About a year ago, maybe a little bit more than that.
So those have been rolled out through, I believe, through DCA, and I think they give out about four a year. I know that, but you would be eligible... say you didn't have one, and you wanted one, and DCA said, "Well, you're going to have to get on the waiting list," but you want one now, you would be able to use your alliance money for that. It's an environmental strategy because then you'd get the word out to people, clean out your medicine cabinet and dispose of your unused drugs. We also have a Realtor program. We work with local Realtors because it was brought... during our data collection process, it was brought to our attention that folks suffering from substance use disorder will frequently look for the open houses for the purpose of sort of cleaning out people's medicine cabinets. So we have, as a matter of fact, I'm meeting with the Realtor tomorrow... the guy from the State Association tomorrow to see how we can kind of partner with them on getting the word out a little bit more effectively. So those are the things that create barriers.
I'm curious about the $10,000. Is that county dollars or federal dollars?
Neither. It's from the state. Comes from the state to the county, and that's that fund that I talked about at the beginning, the Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction Fund, so that when there's criminal activity around drug use or drug selling, that my... the fines that are paid go into this pot at the state, and then once a year, they filter it down to the counties to be given out to the municipalities. So the county administers it. Your relationship is going to be with the county.
Okay.
But it's not county dollars that actually comes... funnels to them from the state.
Well, the reason I ask that is because of the possibility of them cutting... cutting the money.
So it's not part of the state budget. It's actually... do you all have any trust funds here? So do you run your rec fees through a trust fund, usually dedicated by rider? Okay. Usually, when that happens, those funds are dedicated for that purpose. That's what the Dieter Fund is, the Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction, is it's not part of the state budget. And actually, there've been a... a couple of governors have kind of tried to kind of filter that into the state budget, and it's usually been shut down, so.
Generated by fees paid through the municipal program?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to have more information and get a little smaller circle before we make a decision.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, my contact information is on the bottom. If you want some more information, either me or Joanne Chu will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. And Councilmember Sid Johnson from Long Branch Health Department, Chief LaCitra from Monmouth County SPCA. So we're here tonight. The chief will explain the program. He has a grant, but he came to Debbie Nagel and myself to explain it. We thought it would be of some value or maybe of value to some of our residents. Long Branch is the first town he's going to try this program in. And the other thing is, is it's very similar to the TNR we do with the cats, basically SPCA because it's their grant and everything would do the majority of the work, and we're just asked to promote it and assist him, and he's going to give us information so we can license the dogs that he takes care of and so forth. So I'll let Mr. LaCitra, Chief LaCitra, talk about it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Council for seeing me here tonight. So as you know, the mission of the Monmouth County SPCA, one of our main missions, is to promote responsible pet ownership by the prevention of overbreeding. You know, the city of Long Branch has been a great partner in the TNR program in addressing the community of cats and getting them neutered and really trying to bring this under control. Quite frankly, you've been really the leader in the county when it comes to this, as far as number goes on that end. One of the other issues that has been an issue throughout the county, and really throughout the nation, is the... the nation is the overbreeding of the bully population of dogs, the pit bull population. And, you know, we have really paid attention to this and try our best to educate the public in trying to promote responsible pet ownership in allowing or having the owners bring them in to get them spayed and neutered. So in an effort to do so, we secured a grant with the help of the Little Silver Animal Foundation, Little Silver Animal Foundation in regards to enticing residents to come into the Monmouth County SPCA and get their bully breed or mixed bully breed neutered. So the program is going to work like this. We are basically going to offer a $100 stipend to each resident that comes into the Monmouth County SPCA and gets their pit bull or pit bull mix neutered. In doing so, we'll also do the surgery at no cost to them. In doing so, of course, we will not only, you know, neuter the animal, vaccinate it, microchip the animal, but also maintain a list of all residents that aren't licensed and provide that list to the city so the city can in turn approach those people for licensing with those dogs. And we'll make that very, very clear to the people that are coming in. In addition to that, we will offer another $100 stipend to each resident to come back to the shelter, to our animal, our veterinary center, veterinary clinic, to have the animal rechecked, to promote, again, responsible pet ownership and making sure that they're maintaining the health of the animal. The cost to the city is zero. What I'm asking the city to is to become a partner with the Monmouth County SPCA. We needed to identify one city that we wanted to do this. And because of the success of our TNR program in the city of Long Branch, we wanted to do Long Branch first in the county. It would be a six-month program that we would start. And, you know, to get this information out to the public, what I'm asking for the city is to help us promote the program. We'll print out the flyers, we'll give out all the information. We're asking the city to promote this in your newsletter, on your website, and also with the addition of the help of your animal control officers, give them a bunch of pamphlets a day while they're out doing their normal course of duty to pass this off to the public and to hopefully get them in and get the program going. That's basically it in a nutshell. So it's a, it's a grant-based program. We'll go as long as we can until the funds run out and then hopefully be able to secure another grant to continue the program going forward.
Sounds great.
Sounds positive, very positive idea.
It's a great program. It really, it'll work well, we'll control it all. Of course, we'll stay in constant contact with Sid and your animal control people to make certain that, you know, that they're in line with everything that's going on. You know, if we do have a resident in town that has no means of transportation, the county is more than willing to go out and help transport them in with our animal control vans. In a rare occasion that maybe we are unable to, if we're untied up, we may ask maybe the city to help with their animal control officer to help transport one of the animals to the town shelter. But I really don't see that really being much of an issue. We have a pretty large animal control team that's pretty much available. You know, we have full-time shifts that are on the road.
And that's only just for dogs that are pit bulls or bully dogs?
That's correct.
That's it?
They have to be a pit bull or a pit bull mix, not a collie, not a poodle or anything else like that. It's gotta be a pit bull mix.
What about the Rottweilers, though? Are they considered that or German Shepherds?
No, not a German Shepherd. It's gotta be a bully breed mix. The name of the program is called the Pit Stop and we're gonna advertise it as so. And again, it's designed to bring responsible pet ownership to people and really try to knock down the overbreeding of the bully breed. Because unfortunately, not only is it very, very problematic for the city and animal control and also overpopulation of the shelter, it's truly unfair for the animals that are being overbred and not being properly cared for.
Sounds wonderful.
There's no bad that could come out.
Yeah, it's like, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we?
Yeah, so I appreciate your help.
Chief, if you can share, what was the grant? How much was it?
$20,000.
$20,000, great.
So we figure with the cost of the surgery and with the $100 stipend, that we can at least knock out close to 60 surgeries within ten. So we're hoping, we're hoping, we listen, it may fill in very quickly, we don't know. But we're gonna schedule them through the, you know, regular five-day-a-week, if, you know, people call up, they make their appointment, they come in, they get it. And again, you know, the important part too is we have to establish that they're Long Branch residents. So they could either do that by providing us with a driver's license or with a bill or something that shows that they are a resident in town, or best yet, a licensing that the dog is licensed in town. But if they're not licensed, we're gonna make certain that you, as a city, get that information so you can go after them and make certain that those animals are licensed.
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next slide is the Land of Gathering Park. Eric Nathanson and Tom Epp.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Nathanson, TNM Associates. This is my colleague, Tom Epp, also TNM Associates. This is Chris Pack. Some time ago, TNM Associates was approached by the Monmouth Junior Rowing Center and the Monmouth Junior Rowing Center representatives are here. This is Mr. Scott Belford and Mr. Dan Johnson. And these gentlemen asked us to facilitate a meeting with the Mayor and Council tonight so that they present the overall function of the program. And they've identified Pleasure Bay Park as a candid site. So they do have about 15-minute presentation, 10, 15 minutes, and then we can open up to questions and answers thereafter. So do you have a thumb joint or something?
Actually, it's on a laptop, so I've got an HDMI that I could possibly connect to the screen.
Should we utilize a smart board so you guys?
Visual really don't sort of work it up.
Yeah, well, why don't? So, you know, well, I guess he does that. My name is Chris Pack, I'm from Jitten Falls. This program is developed by Scott Belford. He is the director of Monmouth Rowing Center. And then this idea was, came up a while back. Currently the coach, head coach for Christian Brothers Academy, CBA, at the crew level. We also have Dan, who's one of the order of directors on the Junior Monmouth Center and so is I. And we have, where's Brendan Ford? Okay, Brendan Ford, which is, he's one of the assistant directors. So I appreciate the Council Mayor and the professionals to taking the time to listen to us because we felt that we're looking at all these different locations and we found out, you know, we identified a park in Long Branch that's been underutilized. So we kind of wanna come here and just make a presentation and see, you know, if you guys are up for viability of making the community a little bit better.
If we, if we don't have slides, I can, I've given this presentation a million times in my mind. I've been part of the sport of rowing for 25 years. I coached collegiately at Princeton, at University of Pennsylvania, at William &amp; Mary, coached the United States Junior National Team at multiple world championships. And for the last 15 years, I've been building a program at Christian Brothers Academy that started with eight kids and two rented boats and is now 60-some-odd kids a year with cuts at tryouts and we own half a million dollars' worth of equipment. And the one, one issue that I've found repeatedly, I'm Monmouth County resident almost my whole life, is there's no public access to the water for the sport of rowing. The only dedicated rowing dock in Monmouth or Ocean County is owned by the Borough of Rumsen in Victory Park and no one who's not a resident is allowed on it. So we have this fantastic sport that has these boats that are unfortunately so large that if you're gonna participate in the sport, they have to stay on site. It takes a vehicle that's the size of an 18-wheeler to move them. So what we were proposing, we row on this piece of Branchport Creek daily. It's one of the most suitable bodies of water for the sport of rowing that I've encountered in my 25 years in the sport. It's one of the best places in New Jersey for the sport. What we were proposing on the site of an underutilized baseball field, which quite frankly, I looked up the Long Branch Little League site today, I couldn't believe there were a list of 19 parks where baseball's offered. There's no reason, in my opinion, to have a baseball field waterfront when you can offer activities that rely on the water in that space. So what we were proposing as Monmouth Rowing Center was access to the triangular piece, actually, I'll walk us in. Sorry. Oh, perfect. Yeah, actually, we can, Tom has some, you guys can get a sense of the piece there, just a small piece of property.
HDMI.
No problem. It's all right. I, Dan, I didn't, actually, I can do three of them already, see exactly what we're talking about. So what we're essentially, what we're essentially proposing is access to this triangular piece of the property right here, a piece of which, a small piece of which we would fence off just about that size. And the dimensions are all on the presentation that's obviously not coming up. And fence it off in order to keep equipment in and safe. You can't trot half a million dollars' worth of equipment out and leave it on racks, on fence. This entire piece of the property would then be gravel with, you know, a small area for people to come up and drop off canoes, kayaks, whatever stand-up paddleboards, whatever manpower craft they happen to want to use. And there would be a primary public dock right here, a T-shaped dock that would allow anyone who wants to come up and launch, you know, if you have a rowing shell, if you have canoe, stand-up paddleboard kayak. And then this small area over here would be fenced off with a second dock that's meant only to keep these safety launches, the boats that go out and escort the kids when they're on the water so that if someone ends up in the water, there's rescue capacity there and whatnot. The safety launches are very vulnerable to vandalism. It's one of the only issues that we have in the sport is you have to keep safety launches because they have 20-horse engines on them, they have gas tanks in them. We couldn't possibly put those on the dock that's open to the public because there's no way to secure them. So what we were proposing was a second dock available only through the inside of that fenced-in enclosure that's keeping the rowing equipment just for the safety launches. But the primary dock, the large piece of this, of this entire project would be available to anyone who wanted to launch any sort of manpower craft because quite frankly, there's really nowhere in the area to do it. The only public access that I'm aware of, or Red Bank residents, the only public access I'm aware of is, is that little Blackberry Cove that's at the bottom of Maple Ave, which is right behind Kaum Manian. But if you actually go down there, and I walk my dog past it all the time, it's 20 feet of sand beach, there's no dock, and it's right next to a storm drain. So who really wants to walk in the water and get on their stand-up paddleboard or kayak in a spot like that? It's a really, this, this area that we're at is really uniquely suited for the sport of rowing and for all manpower water sports in general. Sorry, we had, so basically, currently we row out of Shrewsbury Sailing and Yacht Club, which is all the way over here in Oceanport. And one of the issues that we have is that due to prevailing winds and sandbars out here, it's actually really unsafe to get around Sands Point most days. This Branchport Creek is what we use every single day for practice. If you've ever been driving along there, you probably see us. If you go over Monmouth Boulevard, you probably see us all the time. And so this is incredibly safe, this is all no-wake, it's always very flat, it's always minimally tidal. If I were somebody who wanted to launch a small boat manpower, this is a perfectly acceptable, nice spot to do it from. And it's, it's one of the best spots that you can pick for the sport of rowing for us right now. The issue that we have, you know, when I first started coaching at CBA, there were about 15, maybe 20 high school rowing programs in the state of New Jersey. There are over 60 now. There are over 100 rowing organizations in the state and we're, we're in two counties that share one dock that you can do the sport on and Rumsen controls it and won't let anyone on it. So this would allow anybody who wanted to row a single or, you know, or canoe or kayak to row out of this facility. And then where we have fenced in, what I'm proposing is, this is what's currently on the site right now. That's, that's a couple of days ago at the site. So that's what's currently there. What we're proposing is a large public dock here that, and the fencing would only be here, so all of the access is still, nothing's restricted. Anyone who wanted to come down and use that, they use anytime they want. The only thing that we're asking is there to be no fishing and crabbing. And you'll see when we add, when we go to show you the use of a rowing dock, you'll see why. This is the, this is what, an example of...
Can you just go back to the last slide?
Sure.
Because what you're showing us is different than what you handed out.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's like, that was TNM's version of it. We mocked it separately, but it's, it's the same concept, it's, they might just...
The only difference is that I, I'm just trying to, does it impact on the use of the, I assume that that's a road that goes or a pad?
Yeah, so there's, there's a current road in place that quite frankly, for my purposes right now, I don't see, I have no issue with the current road that's in place. Engineering, Tom actually had some concerns about whether or not driving boats and trailers in on this pad was, whether the pad was sufficient for it or not.
That's not my question. My question is that it impacts on that and this is, this is farther away from the ball fields. I'm just trying to see whether or not it impacted the use of the ball field.
I think, so if you wanted to keep the ball fields, I think you could, yes. You could, yeah. If you wanted to keep that field, we can certainly work around what's there without interrupting.
Oh, it seems that, that makes sense, right? You're not gonna, you're not gonna...
Our rec directors said these fields, this field is utilized.
We can, we can certainly do this without any impact on the ball field. That's not a problem. So that's what a typical launch dock looks like. These are for safety, if anyone goes in the water, we have safety equipment, everything you could possibly need to make sure that when the athletes are out in the water, whether it's middle school, high school kids, that they, you have the ability to have rescue capacity with them. But these, again, have to be kept safe from vandalism, which is why we propose the launch dock be only within the confines of the fenced-in area that's gonna protect the rowing equipment. This would be, the dock that would be used by the community and would be never, no access would ever be restricted. You can get to it whenever you wanted. We just have to have something on site to protect what is valuable equipment from vandalism. And to give some sense, that's the size of, almost everybody in this picture is six foot five or bigger. So to give you a sense of just how huge this equipment is and just how specific the kind of dock that you need to use is, this is an example of why these shells can't just come in and out every day. You can't put that on the, you know, on the top of somebody's car. And this is the reason why we would need no fishing and crabbing. Because anytime you get in to launch a canoe or kayak or stand-up paddleboard, you're gonna take your shoes off. And anyone who's ever been on a dock that's been crabbed off of, you have shells, you have bones, you have chicken, raw chicken, you know, it's just, the two don't really mix. Not to mention the fact that 200 meters down the creek, there's a park that's perfectly suitable bulkhead for fishing and crabbing. So that would be the only thing that we would, that we would ask because quite frankly, that would, that one activity would really ruin the dock for anybody who was trying to use it for, for rowing. But yeah, there's an example of how we could do it without impacting the baseball field.
And that's the fenced-in area.
That's the proposed fenced-in area. This would all be left open. You know, we, we talked about a small turnaround and drop-off area so that people could, you know, you don't wanna park in the lot that's all the way here and carry a stand-up paddleboard the distance of that park. So we were proposing a small area here where you could drop off your boats onto a rack if you wanted to and then park your car wherever the closest parking available, which I think is, again, on the other side of the field. And then you'd be able to carry your boat down and launch off the dock.
Just for perspective, we just repeated this slide a couple of different times just to, just to give some sense of...
What's there currently and what will be here?
What will be there.
And the benefits, okay?
So what we're proposing for the enclosure is just a simple eight- or 10-foot tennis court fence with wind barrier, just like that, so that, you know, the rowing shells that are on the racks aren't sort of just out in public view. So there's a little bit of privacy to it.
How high are the racks?
So that's something that we're, we're probably gonna custom them based on the size of the site, so you could tell us this, this would be our height preference and we can make them fit.
These are just some examples of all their...
Yeah, these are examples of...
With the type of equipment that's gonna be stored there. Obviously, it doesn't have to be enclosed, these are just some examples of some clubs here that have done this, okay?
And the oar is the same thing. They're, they're 12 and a half feet long, so you can't just put them in your car, you know. I don't bother to put that one. So what we're essentially proposing would be that Monmouth Rowing Center would purchase both of the floating docks and all of the necessary fencing and racks in exchange for a lease on the property or a lease on the racks that are inside of the property and use of that dock as well. So we would not, we wouldn't be restricting anybody's access to the public dock. All we would be doing is keeping the equipment where it needs to be in order to use it. Because otherwise, without the equipment on site, there's no point for us. You just can't, it takes an hour, it takes nine people an hour to de-rig and then re-rig one of these things.
What type of site improvements are used on...
So site improvements would, would fall, again, it's gonna depend on what TNM thinks with regard to the path on the way in, but all we would really be looking for, ideally running water because we're in saltwater and so the equipment does need to be rinsed off. But that could be as simple as a hose up, that's what we're using right now. And it would be nice if there were some lights. And that's, that's really about it.
Security.
Yeah, for, for security purposes. Other than that, we're, we're not really, what, what you could choose to do with it going forward, the sky's the limit and we have some examples of some other programs that started with a fenced-in lot and ultimately enough people partnered on board and chose to expand it into something greater. But for... But for right now, all we really need are those two docks and that fence and just a little bit of, I guess, work.
It's really just an access drive to get into the site. So the trucks or the vehicles could drop the boats off, they could pull in, drop the boats off, and then pull back out. What's there, what's there right now, it's a little narrow, it's probably a little too thin, so we would just have to widen it a little bit, make it a little bit thicker. But maybe Scott, can you talk about some of the benefits for the city itself, some different programs?
Are those widening's part of the, you said you wanted a specific for water? Are we talking about widening the road and building parking lots?
Again, that would be up to the city of Long Branch. I mean, if I need to put, if I need to put a five-hundred gallon tank on a little trailer and use it for water-
No, no, that wasn't my question. No, 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 it's not the water, my question was, you're talking about widening the road and building parking, who's going to do that, you?
No, that's, again, that's why, I don't need the road, personally, I don't think I need the road widened. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Can I just answer that?
Yeah.
So basically, when the engineers come in, and you know how they do their projects, they're going to maximize what needs to be done. For Scott's program, for this particular program, we don't need car access. The kids can carry it originally just to put it back there. But it's going to be suitable for the summer programs where we're going to open it up for the community, where they might have kayaks that they don't want to carry in. For the particular rowing, Monmouth Rowing Center, you don't need to widen the roads or anything, to do anything besides just, you know, asking for the water and maybe some electricity for security purposes. But beyond that point, it's just some added stuff that you may want to do down the future, or now, while we're doing this, to have a better access for the public. And that's why we looked at that. And engineers will take a look at maximizing what's there to suit whatever needs to be coming in the future or whatever, you need to get done now.
But to answer your question, we could do this with a fence and those docks and no water.
So Stan, I know you were looking, if you had a couple of questions, you could just jump in. But before you do that, the other component that you had mentioned us was classes, training for Long Branch kids. Can you talk about that?
Absolutely. So what we currently offer, we offer summer programs where we can have Learn the Row for seventh and eighth graders. We have, we offer programs so that athletes who row at other high schools, like for example, we did, our summer program last summer had a kid who was home from school from Petty rowing for us, some of the athletes from Rumson came over and rowed for us. We had a kid who lives in Belmar who rows at Kent, goes to boarding school. So we basically opened it up so that if you live anywhere in the area and you want to be involved over the summer, and we're not in a position right now where we can offer that fall and spring yet, we're hoping to get there. But for right now, what I would like to do is expand first to the middle schools and really get some interest in the seventh and eighth graders. Getting them involved in the sport, teaching them some basic Learn the Row, and then giving them some opportunities to move up and do some intermediate rowing, possibly go to some races over the summer. And then what I would also, if Long Branch's wishes were that we also have a separate dedicated area where we could offer canoe and kayak racks for year-round storage, that's absolutely something that we could accommodate.
Is that something you charge for typically for that?
Typically, yes.
So would it be summer arrangement where Long Branch kids would not have to pay?
We could certainly, that would certainly be something that we could work out, absolutely.
So do you have some models of arrangements like that, some contracts or memorandums of understanding that you already have?
They, we do, what we've found in this process is that they're wildly different from site to site. We found a site up in North Jersey where the New York Rowing Association on the Over Peck Creek is charging St. Peter's Prep, Don Bosco Prep, and Manhattan College twenty thousand dollars a season to row off of a site pretty similar to what we're talking about. Now, it already has docks, it already has some improvements. But then you also, you find other operations, like for example, down in Camden County, they started with, Camden County started with a fenced-in area exactly like we're discussing. They started with a dock that was actually built by a number of the local parents. And there was so much interest inside of five years, they had seven or eight high schools that started, got on board, Rutgers Camden got on board. They turned around in the county, built a four and a half or five million dollar rowing center on the same site that used to be just a fence and a dock. So, I mean, what I'm proposing is a fence and a dock, and let's see how much interest we get. And if Monmouth University decides, hey, you know what, now there's access, maybe we'd like to have a crew program. You know, that would be something that we could accommodate on that site. If Long Branch High School decided, hey, you know what, there's been middle school programs going on for a couple summers now, and now we've got ten or fifteen kids that go to Long Branch High School, they're knocking on the A.D.'s door and saying, hey, you know what, we'd like to have a crew program. Well, for fifteen years, we fought for this access that we don't have. And we sent two kids to the emergency room last fall because they step on stuff. We don't have, because we don't have a dock. It's, you know, it's not really, it's certainly not ideal for what we're doing and for what it could potentially offer to the community. I mean, just from our perspective, can you put the Monmouth Juniors, the one with us at the end of Henley? Just to put it in perspective, our first graduating class out of Monmouth Junior Rowing Club, these gentlemen right here, and every one of these is going to this school to row as a recruited athlete. He's going to Northeastern, he's currently at the University of Pennsylvania, he's at Dartmouth, he's also at Penn, he's at Northeastern, he's going to Northeastern next year, he's at Cal San Diego, this gentleman is at MIT, and he's at the United States Naval Academy. So it gives you an idea of what the sport can offer. There are very few other sports that the college opportunities are so far and above and beyond compared to the number of high school athletes that have access to this. There would be more rowing if there was more access.
Just to add on that, so currently teaches at, or one of the coaches at Christian Brothers Academy, half the Ivy League kids that go on to the Ivy League schools are from the crew team.
Fifty percent of CBA's Ivy Leaguers over the last eighteen years.
So what is going to open up for the community is that opportunity to get into a sport that's not, it's not been out there for the average person or for, you know, Long Branch itself, and that's where-
The obstacles for new programs, the obstacles for new programs are the same as they've always been. Access, that initial startup cost of the dock is a huge cost. It's going to run upwards of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Which we'll take care of.
Which we're going to take care of. The launches, they're twenty thousand dollars apiece. We have, CBA has almost half a million dollars of equipment. So what, if we can get this stuff on site, and there's already agreement between my club and CBA, a use agreement with that equipment, then all of a sudden now, it opens up the possibility that if somebody comes to us and says, hey, we've got six people or eight people and we want to get something started, I probably have a boat to rent them, and now I have a rack to rent them, and now a dock exists that they can use.
So let me jump in for a second, because I'm not sure what you were expecting as far as action tonight. So let me, wait a minute.
Yeah, sure, sorry.
Let me just respond for a second. It's a, I think it's a spectacular idea. But there's too much information right now to be discussed.
Right.
You know, with, I don't know if you have a written proposal, I don't know if you have any, you know, money, anything about costs and all that stuff. I would pick up on exactly what Mary Jean said on the previous presentation. I think, I'm going to speak for myself, but you certainly have piqued my interest and support. But I think this needs a smaller group, some, maybe a written proposal, you know, something that we can actually, you know, respond to.
And to answer your question, that's kind of what I was, what I was hoping for going forward, just to pique everyone's interest, so that we can sit down and talk about. I'm open to make this happen any way I can possibly do it. I'm not looking to profit, I just really want kids to have access to the water and be able to do this, because it's incredible. So I can tell you right now, people in Long Branch and Oceanport, the first day we were out this March, they come out of their houses and sit and watch us.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's a visibly fantastic sport. It's really, you know, it's just getting people in that park and out on the water and putting some life in there, and getting people fit, and possibly giving kids opportunities to get into better schools. And then again, through the club that we currently have going under Monmouth Rowing Center's Monmouth Junior Rowing Club, I rent space, indoor rowing tank space, ergometer space, weight room space from CBA. So any student that joined over the summer out of that site would then have access to all of those facilities, you know, that are all already in place.
So I think what would be important to me, and I'm guessing to some council members as well, is that this is a, you're right, I mean, it's a sport that I've always looked at, known nothing about, heard that it's very expensive, and just haven't even considered. Because I wouldn't know where to go probably to incorporate. So I guess what I think would be important, I'll speak for myself, but I think all of us think that if there was an opportunity for students in Long Branch to get involved in this and somehow at no cost for access to the equipment, because I'm guessing that's very expensive to do, that would be an important component of our agreement.
Yes.
To us about making sure that the Long Branch students involved.
So I mean, I agree with everything that Anita said, and I understand this is trying to see what we're interested in. But I would say that that's a priority.
Scott, can you also just, piggyback on what we're talking about here, have an opportunity for Long Branch youth to get involved in this? Talk a little bit about Title IX, which, you know, which would be more geared towards the female end, as we thought about it.
Well, I mean, if you look at the collegial, so when I coached collegially, I coached women's rowing collegially, both at Princeton and the University of Pennsylvania. And I was the primary recruiter for each of those programs for a number of years. I can tell you that on the men's side, there are a lot of opportunities collegially and rowing. On the women's side, it's an entirely different animal. There are upwards of a hundred and thirty-five NCA Division One women's rowing programs that have a full complement of twenty-four full scholarships. To the point where there are so few women's rowing programs available at the high school level that college coaches are actually recruiting volleyball players and swimmers, because they don't have enough girls who've been rowing to fill all the scholarship spots that they have. So, I mean, I've said repeatedly to anyone who would listen, if you have a daughter that you get involved in this sport in the seventh or eighth grade, you should not pay full price for college, under any circumstances. I mean, it really would provide tremendous opportunities. My idea for getting it off the ground, you could offer, if we went out to Long Branch High School and put up signs right now saying, "Crew tryouts on Monday", most likely no one would show up, nobody knows anything about the sport. My idea would be to start the seventh and eighth graders learning. And then, all we're doing is sending kids who know how to row all the way into Long Branch High School. Most of the time with the high school programs, if they haven't done it before they got there, they default to whatever sport they did previously. So the reason we like to start seventh and eighth graders is give them something that they've never done before. Let them try a little bit of a different sport. And then, then you have Long Branch High School with, all of a sudden, let's say eight kids do it the first year. Well, now there's eight kids in the freshman class that have rowed. Then all of a sudden, we get eight or ten more the next year. Now there's twenty kids in the high school that have rowed before and might have an interest. Then all of a sudden, they turn around and come to us, we can certainly figure out how to get boats, how to get them in the water. And we'll have the racks, we'll have the docks, we'll have everything there for them to start up with nowhere near the cost than a normal high school.
And Scott, what club up north do you compete with more than anybody else?
Up towards Montclair.
Oh, Montclair.
Which is a public program.
Yeah.
So again, just in the interest of the full agenda, and the idea, you have won us over in terms of further exploration.
That was my only goal for the evening, so.
Yeah, okay, I was just sort of talking to you already.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to come back and give an expanded presentation.
Yeah, well, I think it is a small group, Mary Jean, just like you said before, maybe looking at it.
Well, it is a small group, but obviously the mayor would be there, but we would probably need part of the public works to have some input.
Yes.
You would need the recreation department there, because this field is used. And that fence look like, looks like it's pretty close. So one of my major concerns would be the fact that some of that would be taken away or, you know, just, I just have a concern with that.
Yeah, just so you guys know, the plans that were presented are very preliminary, very conceptual, just kind of rough. So we could certainly work with your red director, if you could help you to maximize the existing uses out there, make sure there's no impact.
When you open up there, these fields are not used, and that's not true.
Yeah.
They are used. Certainly baseball, they definitely, our basketball courts are used.
Oh, that'd be, that basketball court, I see, I see people all the time. Yeah, we can, we can absolutely, we can, no, we can absolutely work this project without impacting the baseball field. Having walked the property now a number of times and measured it ourselves, we can absolutely accommodate this project without impacting it.
And last thing I would have, Mary, I've seen that list with Trinity Hall and so on.
Yes.
So schools raining and so on, well, you see any, you know, the Long Branches there, Red Bank.
Oh, that was, yeah.
The Long Branches.
Yeah, no, right, that's what I'm saying, one, yeah, that's-
The reason I didn't put Red Bank-
That's there for presentation purposes, but I'm saying, those are the practices.
Yeah, and that's a great point, and that is the reason why it's so much beneficial.
Chris, the reason I listed Trinity and Rannie is they already have the programs up and going.
Right, they would benefit, but I didn't, I wouldn't be comfortable, no matter which school you go, I was, that Long Branch is benefit.
Right.
Yeah, that's-
Those other schools, they already have those programs, and they have the money to go wherever they need to go. So before we give up-
Well, if we're looking to set up a scenario where Long Branch can get involved with no cost for boats, renting space back to these programs is going to be the way to do it. You know, renting racks to Trinity, renting, so we would, we'd have to sit down and come up with, obviously, with an arrangement that makes sense. But yeah, there's absolutely no reason. I just, having started a crew program at the high school level myself, I just, I know that the approach of just walking in and dropping it on Long Branch's A.D. is not the best way to get it. The best way to get it done is to start with the younger kids, and then as soon as we build the interest, then obviously you strike, you know? And having all that equipment down there and having it available to Monmouth Rowing Center puts us in a position where we could get them on the water for very low costs.
I think the next time we meet, to further discuss, we should also include the Long Branch Board of Education, you know?
If that's what you want, I think that we talked about this, to make it a bigger and open to the whole community, that's what we'd be, that's up to you guys, you know? And that was, you know, forcing us to say, hey, that we want that. So just the last point, you know, I could tell you about Scott. He is a guru when it comes to getting his kids into certain schools. You can have an average SAT score and just above-average GPA, he'll get to, and he's gotten kids into Princeton and everything else. So I don't want to undersell what he can do. My son and all the dads here that's part of this program, our kids went to the program, so we know what happens, you know? My kid is a junior at Wisconsin, it is the largest Division One men's rowing team. And the kid who's a senior is his mentor basically, because, I mean, well, he, because my son, he's the captain of the team. They have close to about ninety guys on the team. So these are opportunities. And then Dan's son is going to Northeastern. So I can tell you, all these schools, and believe me, I have another one that goes to Mass, and he doesn't have a specialized program that he's done with, like my other son is, and it's very difficult. We're going to all these different schools, to the top schools, and the kids that are at CBA that he's applying with don't have the scores that he has, but we'll get into some of these programs because of it. So it really is a meaningful thing.
Stan, just, did you have any concerns for the group, just so we know for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm concerned the area, that's our major flood area in the entire cap. Okay, every time there's any type of a full moon, Northeastern, even the slightest twenty, twenty-five mile an hour Northeastern, that area floods out. The reason that was never used or never fixed up anymore, just the baseball field and stuff like that, is because of the water that's up there. That area is constantly wet, I'm concerned how you're going to handle that as far as putting, you know, any kind of racks over there or anything like that with the fencing and stuff like that with the water coming up. Jake will testify, we tried to put a shed out there on the other side of the baseball field and floated away. We had to go in the river and get it. And I'm also concerned with your access, there's a small path over there, the baseball left field, the baseball field runs right along that. You make that wider, you're going to take out the baseball field. And the baseball field is used all the time by adults and stuff like that. It's not used by the little leagues much, but it is used by adult football teams and stuff like that. Just to think about, I don't want to go in the, we're running late, but that is a major flood area, the entire Lake Avenue area, and that park floods out all the time. So I don't know, you're not guys-
Yeah, that's something that we would look at, you know, if the city decides to move forward, we would get into the specifics of surveying everything out in the river as well as on the land, looking at the historic flooding events, and that's something that we would work out during the design if we need specialized anchoring systems or whatnot for it. And as far as the baseball field goes, we can certainly keep it, we won't have to modify it at all. It looks like there's enough, even if we do decide to do a new access road at some point. From what I looked at, it looks like it's still wide enough to put that in without having to shift the field or take down any other fences.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you to confirm two things, that you talked to Green Acres?
Yes.
Because this type of joint venture on Green Acres property could be very complicated.
So this is, so Green Acres is a division of NJDEP, they oversee all parklands in the state. This is not a funded property through Green Acres, so it's just on the proxy list as an open space park property. So we did speak with Jessica Patterson at DEP, see if there's any issues from their end as far as having somewhat of a public-private partnership in a private area. uh, as far as having somewhat of a public-private partnership in a private area that would be on this public park. And they came back and they told us, no, there would be no issues. It's really no different than if you have a Little League or other travel baseball team that's not associated with the city who sets up some trailers or storage sheds for their equipment. So, it's really no different than other sports having private storage areas.
And was there any need or foreseeing need for any bulkhead repair or improvement?
That, that is something that we could look at and talk to the city about. As far as the, uh, floating docks, we can work around the bulkhead. Um, we can kind of do an anchoring system behind the bulkhead, but i- if there are some areas of the bulkhead that do look like they need some improvements, now would be the time to do that.
For you to do it for us.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah, you guys to work out, yeah.
I mean, yeah, there's, there's, there's trade-offs here, and you're getting a, a pretty big return on your investment, but that was my understanding, that there would be other improvements that would go with this. Also, permitting would all be on, that would be part of the deal, the entire project.
Correct. Yes, there is a good amount of permitting through the EP to get this done. That's something that we would work with the crew club on, if you would see.
Okay. Pick up again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide is, uh, Seventh President's Park.
This is it.
Hi, nice to see you again. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us. Um, Joe's gonna hopefully-
I'm gonna try to figure this out, yeah.
Just plug it into the left-hand side here.
The left-hand?
Yeah, and see all the way into the car.
Thank you, my name is Paul Gleitz, I'm the principal park planner for Martin County Park System, and I head up our planning division. That's Joe Sardonia, he's our chief landscape architect, and he heads up our design division. Um, we're here to talk to you about, um, kind of finalizing some future improvements at Seventh President's Oceanfront Park. Um, we came in and had a brief discussion, um, a couple of months ago, um, and the mayor complimented, decided it would make sense to come through to you, um, tonight. Um, to give you some history, uh, we have been working on new designs and new, um, uh, improvements at the park for over a decade. And we, we were in with the prior administration, and we present some ideas, and they give us some feedback. We go back to the drawing board and present some more ideas and get some more feedback. Um, so, we've kind of gone back and forth through that process several times, and now we're really ready to move forward. Um, we have a hundred thousand dollars in capital funds allocated for, um, soft costs, meaning design and permitting, um, to move this project forward right now. And then, once we get that process complete, we would then, um, allocate hard cost funds through our capital budget to do the, the improvements. Um, so, if you see, if you look up on the screen here, this is the, uh, the park. And, uh, what we're really looking to do, or make a number of improvements to the park, Joe can go through them in, in detail, but overall, we're looking to complete a pedestrian multi-use pathway around the park to connect to your promenade, to get people moving from north to south and have a connection, because right now, the park kind of sits as a, as a block in that area. Because of the way we collect our fees and because of the infrastructure and everything else, um, it's, it's hard for folks to come and get around the park and keep going on their north-south journey up and down the seashore. What this would do would create a multi-use path, um, starting, uh, on the, to, to the right of the screen, connecting into your promenade, going around the park, and connecting back out on, on the other side. The other thing we're looking to do, as you know, we do have traffic backups, so we're also planning, um, on doing some internal circulation changes. So, um, one of the ideas is to have one way in and then two ways out, and that would make some changes as well to the circulation. And the third is, we have a long-term vision of perhaps turning, um, sections of Old Ocean Ave into a promenade. So, Joe, um, if you want to walk them through some of the, um, the design details, um, the reason why we're here is that we, if, um, if you, if the, the city is willing to give up some of its on-street parking, its paid parking spaces, we'll have more room to do more. Um, so, we're looking to see if, um, the benefits and the, you know, the improvements we're looking to make, um, are worth it to the city in order to give up a portion of, of your paid parking. Um, so, we have a question about, will you give up some paid parking in front of the main park itself on the one side of the street? Um, and do you have any problems giving up additional paid parking, um, and the idea of closing off Ocean Ave? So, that's what we're here to discuss, and I'll turn it over to Joe.
Okay, this is the night of information overload, so I'll give you some more. Okay, um, anyway, this is, you know, I'll squint at this too much, so I'm a bit going to detail, but, but this is Seventh President's Park, and just to orient you, uh, the existing Long Branch promenade ends here, this is Seaview Avenue, this is Thirty-Six coming in, right in here, this is our current entrance. Okay, this is, uh, this is the north, uh, our north, what we call the north end, which has our, our state park and some park, and then, of course, the entire beach and so on. So, uh, let's see how I advance this thing, if I can advance this here.
Just tap on it, I think, is that PowerPoint?
Maybe slide it.
Got it?
No, slide it.
Okay, okay, now, that's not it.
See, he hits on the slide.
I need to slide, so.
Yeah, that is what I'd share, that, that may be larger, so, let me get a damn, I wanna advance to the next slide.
Try to see all.
Try to see all photos up in the corner and see if that'll bring up in the corner.
See all photos?
I'll see that, yeah.
Who can operate a computer?
Close that, never mind.
Oh, I see, okay, so.
Maybe close that and go back to the, uh- Let's bring up the folder, maybe that'll be, you gotta get the folder back. Here we go.
Okay, I'll do it, very good.
Between here and then-
Okay, good, sorry. Um, but anyway, I'm, I'm gonna start, uh, from the south and we're, we're, we're working our way north, but, well, one of the things, as Paul explained, we were trying to do was to create a, a pedestrian pathway around the perimeter, which would run all the way around the park. So, be it an urban area and so forth, and, uh, you know, it would be, it would be relatively linear. And, uh, so the promenade, the Long Branch promenade now ends at this point. I always kind of thought that was a shame to just, just end right there, and there's really no good way to, to safely get around when the, when the entrance here is closed. So, part of what we, you know, and, and the staff had a real good time working on this, but part of what we thought was to somehow try to tie the park in with Long Branch, with the promenade, and create a plaza in here, because this is a beautiful view to the north, up the beach and out. And so, this could be, create this plaza in here, and also create a walkway, potential bike way all the way around the park, as well as possibly in the off-season, offering a paid pathway through the middle of the park. Okay, so, when, when we're not collecting fees or anything like that or off-season, people could then come through the center of the park to get from one end to the other, and at other times, they would be able to go around the park. So, one of, one of the things we looked at, and we used the residential standards here, was, you know, Old Ocean Avenue here, but by giving up point, or, you know, you, the, the point along the east side of Old Ocean Avenue in front of here, we would be able to create, uh, a ten-foot two-way bike lane and a five-foot walkway. And then, uh, it would be pretty safe for, you know, pedestrians and bikers not to get involved in the traffic and so forth, and this would, this would go all the way around the perimeter. Now, we are trying to, 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 you know, kind of maintain or just in-screaming and landscaping along here, but, uh, we, we could, it, it could be fit in, and, uh, you know, with, with the, with, by taking the use of the opportunity to plug in. I think, uh, Ocean Avenue is, uh, forty-seven feet wide in this location. Okay, this here is, uh, is the center of the park. There are times when traffic is really backed up and so forth, and it backs up and it spills out down to, uh, Ocean Avenue and Ocean Boulevard. So, one of the things we were looking at was changing our circulation a bit, and what we would then be able to do, because right now, we have three lanes in and one lane out. Okay, so, anybody who gets in here has to then find their way back out, and this gets very cluttered up in here, and I think it's, I think it's got a high rate of accidents. Uh, minor accidents, it's kind of, what we were thinking of doing is by redoing the interior here, we could then have a one-way in, four lanes in, and then we could bring people out at other locations. So, if you wanted to see that, this, this, this traffic would come in, go through here, and then come back out here at this location, and then go down to Avenue L, and exit Avenue L without going back out, uh, on Thirty-Six. And on this side, we could exit out, and, and this wouldn't be improved, point in this, the blue is just overflow, so would not be improved, but we would improve this, this here, an area that he paved lots, but, uh, you know, people would come in and then come out on Seaview and go out, and exit on Thirty-Six. So, that would then reduce conflicts in this area right here. So, um, you know, continuing on through the park, we've got the perimeter trail. I mean, here, um, we, you know, just at the side, there's some other things, the, uh, the exit will come out here, and then people could come down this way and exit out on Thirty-Six. And we, we, we would eliminate this lot in here, which then gives the, you know, gives the, the dunes a chance to expand. All the dunes in this location, they were built in nineteen eighty-three, they're twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet high, above sea level right now. And when we did have sandy, this, this area was well protected, we had no impacts whatsoever on it. All right, but, um, so we'd like to give, give the dunes a chance, because the dunes tend to migrate, and give them a little bit, more room and move out of this, and this would become our group use special area, and this would be our internal pathway through, as well as the perimeter trail around. And, and this is a concept where we would look to turn Old Ocean Boulevard on the north side of the park into a pedestrian way. Okay, so, the, right now, the, the only two, uh, there's two, uh, uh, high rises that's, that sit here, this high rise currently has an entrance off of Old Ocean Avenue to the park in here, is also accessed this way. This high rise has, off of Marion Avenue, has a access in back. So, these folks would, would not be impacted at all. Uh, we, we kind of showed this, if we needed to, we could provide a lane to access in there, but this would become a, a pedestrian way, and that would enable the dunes that were currently developed in, in front of the wall, the old seawall, would enable them to be able to migrate back. Um, you know, and, and staff kind of took a, a seashell theme here. Um, you know, I, I think it would be a great, um, you know, extension of the promenade all along the shore, and eventually, maybe we could connect up and keep going, you know, there's bike ways and stuff that are being worked on coming down, uh, Ocean Avenue. So, eventually, maybe to connect up with that. But, um, basically, in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're looking at, and this was just kind of some of the, uh, you know, staff decided they liked the clamshell theme for the entrances, so we got a stale and a scallop, you know, a northerly, and that sort of thing, but that would kind of be the, you know, the ideas, on the entrance, we would create something here to kind of hide the old pump station that's back there. Um, so, it, right now, it's all on a concept phase, you know, but, you know, in, you know, wanting to get, to, to see how people feel about it before moving forward, but, um, you know, it, uh, and, and this isn't something that's gonna happen overnight, guys. I mean, you know, it's one of these long-range things that are gonna, gonna take time, gonna take money, you know, that sort of thing. So, one of the things we're hoping for is, you know, at least if, if we can at first, you know, buy into the perimeter pathway type idea, we can start working on that. Um, we really wanna try to encourage, uh, more people into our park through walking or biking or other means of transportation. You know, I mean, right now, you know, this whole area gets overwhelmed with traffic and everything else, so we'd really like to encourage more alternate means of transportation and kind of open this park up to the pedestrians, you know, on the promenade and coming in and that sort of thing. So, that, that's one of the things we're trying to do here. So, with that, goodbye.
So, if you could go back to the, the slide that had the, um, that showed the, the perimeter trail detail?
The detail?
Yeah, the detail, yeah, so, so it helps. So, what we do have funds our allocated for is our permit. Um, and so, we have to go to CAFRA, and you have to go to DEP, get all these permits. And what we tend to do, what they want to see from us is everything we want to do, so it's not some sort of creeping, you know, expansion over time. We want to show, put all our cards on the table and say, this is what we want to do. So, when we get the permit, we have the permit, and we can take our time developing the improvements over time, approved and, you know, buildable under that permit. Uh, so, we'd like to kind of get an understanding of all of these elements together, but like Joe had said, um, we won't be building them in the next two years. Well, we will start with the perimeter trail, that would be something we'd want to provide capital funding for in the next two years. Um, and then, other elements would be added as we go. Um, so, there, there's three main questions we have. One is, um, are you willing to give up the paid parking on the Old Ocean, on Old Ocean Ave? Um, our numbers now, give or take one or two, um, from the, uh, from Seaview through over to, across the main section.
Seaview to Avenue L.
From Seaview to Avenue L is about eighty-eight spaces.
Eighty-eight spaces over there right now.
So, that's the first question we have, can, you know, are you willing to give up the eighty-eight spaces to give us the extra room within the right-of-way? We'd have to get an easement from you to allow us to do the trail improvements in the right-of-way, but that would give you the ten-foot two-way bike lane and a five-foot walkway. If the, um, city's not willing to give up the parking, we could probably put a five-foot sidewalk in, and that would be a multiple-use, maybe six-foot sidewalk. Um, but you'd have the interaction between the walkers, the bikers, the strollers, and everything else all in there. The third backup option we've looked at, which would take more work, would be to reduce the travel, and completely redesign that section of Ocean Ave to re- um, reduce the travel ways, reduce the size of the parking spaces, make it more of a residential street design where you'd only have seven or eight-foot wi- you know, wide parking spaces, and the travel lanes would go down to ten feet rather than the current fifteen you have there. The one nice thing is that it's a decent-sized cartway, you know, from curb to curb, there's, there's room. Um, so, if you think you could go with fewer parking in some areas, shorter parking, if you wanted to redesign the lanes, since, um, some of the commercial uses have left, and you only have, most of that area has just residential, except for like one office, I guess. and you only have, most of that area has just residential, except for like one office, I guess.
Yeah, you could design this, you could design this street as a residential street. And by now, when you're parking, which I think is about nine foot, and, you know, now in your lane, which would, that enabled, you know, the whole issue with parking on one side is, especially with biking, is, you know, you always have to be aware of somebody opening the car door. You know, there's always kind of a conflict there, so, we need to be aware of that. So, in that concept, you know, it would be, kind of be set up of just a little bit of boot. And if that area were available for the bike lane next to the travel, you know? And that would eliminate the issue with parking and doors and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so, the easiest step is to give us the maximum flexibility to design the walkway, is to give up the parking. After that, we'd have to do a smaller, you know, combined-use kind of pathway on our site. Or the third would be to redesign the entire section. That was the first question we had for you and for free to think about. The second is, are,